I'm councillor Cash Nai, Chair of this Licensing Subcommittee, which has been to me to consider an application for a review of a premises licenses for Plus Two Three Four. Crown Hill, please note that this meeting will be recorded for broadcast on the internet after the meeting has taken place and reviewed online on the council's YouTube website. Generally, the public diary is not filmed by entering the meeting room and using the public seating area. You are concerned it's being filmed. The record of this meeting will be retained for a period of six months for the purpose of webcasting and preparing the minutes of the meeting. Members of the Subcommittee, before we begin, I'll ask the Subcommittee members to introduce themselves. When I call you, please give your name and role on the Subcommittee. And if you have any declarations of interest, please take the opportunity to declare them now. Councillor Eaton.
Councillor Graham Eaton, member of this committee, representing.
Yeah, thank you very much. Councillor McLean.
Good evening. Councillor Keith McLean, one of the Vice Chairs of the Plan of the Licensing Committee.
And I'll now ask the officers to introduce themselves. James.
Good evening, everyone. My name is James Slane, I'm the Principal Licensing Officer at the Council.
Yeah, that's Eleanor.
Good evening. I'm Eleanor Coffey, a Licensing Officer at Milton Keynes City Council.
Yeah, Ed.
So, good evening. It's Ed Fisher. I'm here as a witness. Mr. Coffey have called.
Thank you very much. Ophias.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry. Good evening. My name's Ophias. I'm the Senior Principal. I'm the Principal Lawyer for the Licensing Committee.
Jane.
Evening, Jane Crichton, Democratic Services Officer.
Now go through the other parties. So we'll start with Victoria, please.
Good evening, everyone. Victoria, CEO of Plus Two Three Four.
Thank you very much. Gemma.
Good evening, Chair. Gemma McCormack, Thames Valley Police Licensing Officer.
And finally, thanks for being patient, Ryan.
Good evening, Ryan Sharkey, Senior Environmental Officer.
Thank you very much. So I've already dealt with matters one and three of the agenda, so we'll move to item two, apologies for absences.
Thank you, Chair. Apology received from councillor Trendle and councillor Eaton is their nominated substitute.
Thank you very much, Jane. So item four is the Licensing Subcommittee procedure. So I'll outline the procedure that will be followed for this meeting. Can I also ask the applicant and other parties bear in mind that the guidance that has been provided to them in advance of a meeting, of which are appropriate here tonight? So we'll start with the Licensing Officer introducing the review application. They'll make no recommendations regarding a decision on the application to the Subcommittee. The review applicants will present their case, including calling any witnesses, and then questions may then be put to the review applicant through and with the consent of the Chair by the other parties and the Subcommittee. The responsible authorities will then present their representation, and then questions may be put to those persons through and with the consent of the Chair by the other parties and the Subcommittee. And then the current license holder may be asked to comment. And then I'll then invite someone up replicating the order of speaking for when cases are presented, and the members of Subcommittees will then adjourn to deliberate and come to a decision. Only the Leader, Advisor and Clerk will remain with the Subcommittee, and you'll be informed orally of decision of the Subcommittee along with any conditions and reasons for those conditions. And finally, a written decision notice will be sent to the applicant as soon as possible thereafter. So we move on to item five, application for a review of a premises licenses, and we'll start with James to present.
Thank you, Chair. So, good evening, members. Today you are considering a review application, which has been served by the Licensing Authority as a responsible authority. And really, just as a reminder to all present, where a review or representation is made by the Licensing Authority, there must be a clear split between the Administering Officer, which in this case is me, and the Responsible Authority Officer, which is Eleanor, and hence that's why there's a couple of us here today. A review application is usually served in order to resolve concerns when a premises is not promoting the licensing objectives, and actions are required to try and resolve these problems. The review application has been served on the grounds of crime and disorder, public safety and the protection of children from harm. Members will note that there's been a premise license in place since April 2024, and this was granted without a DPS in place, as demonstrated by the License on Page fourteen. Though this is a bit unusual, it is viable, it is permitted, and it allows for the business to have the security of securing a premises license and then apply for a valid DPS later on. Doesn't often happen, but it is permitted. The review has been served in response to the identification that alcohol was being served. And despite continued efforts to try and bring the premises into compliance, there seemed to be a lack of action by the license holder to sort of heed the advice of Licensing Officers and quite simply just stop selling alcohol, or obtain a personal license, or apply to put a DPS with a personal license onto the license. There's quite a short history of the premises, and essentially in our systems, it just reflects the investigation into the sale of alcohol without a valid DPS. And I note, looking back, that the matter of there being no personal license was raised back in March 2024, when the initial application was made, or inquiries into the application was made. And, members, I know you can read the chronological order of what happened to the lead up of the review, and Eleanor will probably cover it in her submission, so I'm not going to repeat them now. But suffice to say, it appears that the license holder had been given, I believe, every opportunity to try and resolve the issues, but have either opted not to do so, or have been unable to do so for whatever reason. Members may question why prosecution hasn't been taken. However, there should always be a graduated approach to enforcement, and in this instance, we've decided that a review is certainly the most expedient way of trying to resolve the matter. We've received two representations from responsible authorities, the Thames Valley Police and Environmental Health. Thames Valley Police, they list concerns in relation to three incidents that happened at the premises that may have been resolved if there was CCTV in operation, and it appears there wasn't. But the license holder might be able to go into a bit of detail in that later. And obviously Gemma McCormack is here to talk about that representation. Environmental Health have listed a range of food hygiene and safety matters that have not been resolved. Ryan is here, and he may not be able to answer all the specific questions due to there being an ongoing investigation, but he can at the very least provide some background to his concerns and his representation. The license holder, Victoria, is present. She has not provided a formal response to the review, but she has acknowledged what's happening basically, and obviously is here today to be able to put forward her case. I've provided a map of the locality, Annex F, with some photos. That's at page seventy. Crown Hill is a mix of commercial and residential, although the specific location is almost certainly far enough away from residents to cause any issues to people living there. Surrounding businesses include general offices, tattooists, and then other similar-ish food and takeaway premises. And there's some additional papers that you should have in respect of an inspection by Eddie Fisher, and Eleanor has brought Ed as a witness for you to question if required. And I think that's the end of my report, Chair, and if you've got any questions, then I'm more than happy to provide answers.
Thank you very much, James. So we'll start with, do we have any questions from any other parties here, or James? Nope. All right. Do we have any questions from the Subcommittee? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, James, for a very succinct and comprehensive introduction. So going back to the granting of the licence in the first place, you said it's unusual to grant a licence without a DPS on the licence. Can you recall why that action was taken, given there wasn't an application with a DPS for a personal license holder?
Yes, Chair. So I'm just checking. I think the application didn't initially go to committee, and so it was a valid application. And they don't have, one doesn't have to have a DPS on the licence. They can get permission to have a premises licence, which licensed the restaurant. And it would just so happen, I think, Victoria, you were listed as the DPS, but didn't have a personal licence, which again is perfectly fine. But by not having a personal licence, you would be committing offences against some of the mandatory conditions, because one of the mandatory conditions requires the DPS to hold a valid personal licence. So it's an acceptable way of making the application. You obtain your premises licence, and at a later date, you can identify an appropriate DPS.
So that would mean until an appropriate DPS was in place, alcohol should not have been served?
That's correct. So if alcohol, and alcohol was served, so that's an offence or a breach of one of the mandatory conditions, but the licence itself is perfectly valid.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councillor Eaton, anything for yourself? All right. All right. So we'll move on to Ed to address the committee. Well, it might be Eleanor. Sorry, my script says Ed, but sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. This review concerns a premises licence held for Plus Two Three Four Limited. The evidence before you today demonstrates the sustained and serious failure to comply with the Licensing Act 2003, repeated breaches of statutory requirements and a lack of engagement from the license holder despite numerous opportunities to rectify the situation. For these reasons, I will explain why revocation of the licence is not only proportionate, but necessary to uphold the licensing objectives and protect the public. The Licensing Act 2003 sets out four key objectives: the prevention of crime and disorder, public safety, the prevention of public nuisance and the protection of children from harm. These objectives are paramount and must be promoted at all times. Under Section nineteen of the Act, alcohol may not be sold unless a designated premises supervisor is named on the licence and holds a valid personal licence. This requirement is fundamental because it ensures accountability and responsible management of alcohol sales. On the fifteenth of February 2025, a routine compliance visit was conducted at the premises by myself. Staff members on site confirmed that alcohol was available for sale, but checks revealed that no DPS was listed on the licence. This is a clear breach of Section nineteen of the Licensing Act 2003. Following this verbal warning, on the twenty fourth of February, an email was sent advising that alcohol sales must cease immediately until a valid DPS was appointed via a variation application. The email also explained the legal implications of continuing to sell alcohol without authorisation, including the offences under Section one three six of the Licensing Act 2003, which makes it unlawful to carry on licensable activities without proper authorisation, and Section one three seven, which makes it an offence to expose alcohol for sale where such sale would be unauthorised. On the same day, the license holder and Director of Plus Two Three Four Limited, Victoria, responded claiming to hold a personal licence. Personal licences must be applied for through the local authority where the individual formally resides. So although Milton Keynes Licensing had no record of this, it was initially possible that the license holder's personal licence was issued by another authority historically. Checks were carried out to confirm this, and on the twenty fifth of February, further details of a personal licence were requested to verify whether this was held elsewhere. Victoria failed to respond to this request, and a further chase and email was sent on the fourth of March 2025, advising that the document previously supplied was a personal licence qualification certificate rather than a licence itself, and that she should use this to apply for the relevant licence required. Advice was given to apply for the personal licence and submit a DPS variation, or use a temporary event notice if alcohol sales were to continue temporarily. Despite this clear guidance and support, no application was submitted. A follow-up visit was conducted on the seventeenth of March, and during which staff on site confirmed that alcohol sales had ceased. However, the website continued to display an alcoholic drinks menu, and this was also displayed on site with wine glasses still set on tables, raising concerns that alcohol might still be available for sale. The continued presence of wine glasses on tables and alcoholic drink menus displayed on the premises and website creates the impression that alcohol is still available. Under the Licensing Act 2003, this is a serious concern because advertising or presenting alcohol for sale when it is not authorised can mislead customers and undermine compliance with the licensing objectives. It also raises the risk that alcohol could be supplied unlawfully, whether intentionally or inadvertently. Section one three seven of the Licensing Act states that a person commits an offence on any premises if he exposes for sale by retail any alcohol in circumstances where the sale by retail of alcohol on those premises would be an unauthorised licensable activity. This means that even displaying alcohol for sale, such as through menus, may constitute an offence if the premises is not authorised to sell alcohol. Written confirmation of the visit was issued on the eighteenth of March, reiterating the offences under the Act should sale of alcohol take place. The failure to remove these indicators shows poor compliance and raises serious concerns about the license holder's willingness to follow instructions, significantly increasing the risk of formal enforcement action. Following this, Victoria was contacted by myself via telephone on a number of occasions, and copies of associated email correspondence can be found at Annex C in a bid to resolve the issues raised. The contents of Annex C clearly demonstrate the extensive efforts made by the Licensing Authority to engage with the license holder and support her in bringing the business into compliance. Despite repeated advice, guidance and opportunities to rectify the situation, there has been a consistent lack of engagement and failure to act. This continued non-cooperation strongly indicates an unwillingness to comply with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003. And critically, the matter of having no designated premises supervisor on the licence remains unresolved, leaving the premises in breach of mandatory conditions. On the first of July twenty five, a final email was sent advising that further action was now due to be taken due to the lack of engagement, and that I was considering a review of her premises licence due to concerns the licensing objectives were not being upheld. Due to the continued non-compliance, the matter was escalated, and on the seventh of August, a test purchase conducted by my colleague, Mr. Fisher, confirmed an unauthorised sale of alcohol. Mr. Fisher is here as a witness for me in respect to the licence inspection undertaken, should you have any questions about page fifty five, Annex C. But his opinion is the premises are trading in breach of several licensing requirements when selling alcohol. In response to the failed test purchase, a Section nineteen closure notice under the Criminal Justice and Police Act 2001 was served on the eighteenth of August. This notice is a serious enforcement measure requiring cessation of unauthorised licensable activities and warning that failure to comply may lead to a closure order under Section twenty. Copies of the notice and the cover letter were served at the premises and to the addresses held on file, as shown at Annex E in the report. On the seventeenth of September, Victoria confirmed receipt and understanding of the notice, and despite this, a further test purchase on the twenty fifth of September confirmed that unauthorised alcohol sales were continuing in breach of the closure notice. Menus listing alcoholic drinks were still also displayed on site, online, and this was constituting exposure for sale under Section one three seven. This pattern of behaviour demonstrates not only non-compliance, but a deliberate disregard for the law and the licensing objectives. The license holder has been given every opportunity to engage and rectify the breaches and to operate lawfully, but instead has ignored repeated warnings, formal enforcement and even a closure notice. This is not a case of misunderstanding or administrative error. It is a sustained failure to act responsibly. The Section one eight two guidance, particularly paragraphs eleven point one to eleven point two eight, makes clear that reviews are a key protection for the community and that revocation is appropriate where problems persist despite warnings. Paragraph eleven point one oh stresses that early warnings should be given and acted upon. In this case, those warnings were ignored. And the guidance also states that Licensing Authorities should take robust action where premises underline the licensing objectives, and that revocation should be considered for serious or repeated breaches. This matter is serious enough to warrant prosecution, however, we have chosen not to pursue that route because it must be addressed promptly. Current delays within the court system mean that a prosecution could take over a year to reach the magistrates, which would leave the premises operating in breach of the licensing objectives for an extended period. Revocation through the review process ensures a swift and effective action to protect the community. The impact on the licensing objectives cannot be overstated, and continues unauthorised alcohol sales after formal enforcement undermine the prevention of crime and disorder. The absence of a DPS compromises public safety and accountability. Operating outside the legal framework designed to safeguard these objectives erodes public confidence in the licensing system. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Do any other parties have any questions for Eleanor? No questions from the Subcommittee? Yep, go ahead.
Are we going to hear from Mr. Fisher as well?
I think he might be here as a witness, but we'll ask Ed.
Happy, obviously, to talk about the feelings I've had with the premises, if you like. If you'd like me to expand on them slightly. There's a slight error, unintentional error in what you've just heard from Eleanor. There was a test purchase in August, but that wasn't by me. It was by a colleague. But I did a test purchase in September because we were concerned that alcohol was being sold in breach of the mandatory condition under the Licensing Act, and we'd served a closure notice. Now, the reason that the personal licence holder is so important is it's a fundamental requirement of the Licensing Act. So every single licensed premises that sells alcohol in England and Wales has to have an appointed person to oversee things. So it's not our rules, it's the law. So it's very unusual to have a premises selling alcohol with no personal licence holder attached to it. It's exceptional. And, you know, we're all disappointed that we haven't managed to get it over the line on this. So I did a test purchase in September, and I was sold Stella. So that was on sale, and the menus were out. And then my second involvement was, following the review by Mrs. Coffey, I visited to see how compliant the premises were now were, because they might have got a personal licence holder by then. So I did an inspection against the licence to see if things were resolvable or as they were. Now, when I visited in October, I met one of the directors of Two Three Four, sorry, Two Three Five. Sorry, Two Three Four, let me get it right, Ed, and there still wasn't a personal licence holder associated with the premises that I could dig out after discussions with the director here. So it didn't appear to me that there was any way they could be selling alcohol without breaking the law, but there were still menus available on that day. So my evidence is they were in breach in October, and they were in breach in September. Prior to that, I didn't have any involvement, committed.
Well, any chance, when you were doing your test purchase, did you ask for a jug of water?
That's a good question, and I don't know the answer, councillor McLean. I can't remember. I'm very sorry.
I guess I have one question for you, Eleanor. It was just the distinction about something you said about having a personal licence and a personal licence qualification certificate. Am I right in saying qualification certificate basically means you've done everything bar apply for the final licence?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah. In order to apply for a personal licence, there are several requirements that you have to meet. One of those is getting a basic disclosure, so it's a basic criminal record check. You have to complete the form along with the criminal declaration, and you also have to sit a personal licence course, which basically goes through all the requirements under the Licensing Act around responsible alcohol retailing. So Victoria holds the qualification to actually apply for the licence, so she's been through that training, but she hasn't done the final step and actually applied for the licence itself. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Graham, I know you had a, did you have a question? No, okay.
Sorry, can I add on to that, or?
You will have a chance to come in at the animated case. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we're on the script now. So Ed, you're not going to speak any further. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so now we move on to the responsible authorities. So we'll start with Gemma. Please go ahead to present your case.
Thank you, Chair. So on receipt of the review application, I went through all of our police records in relation to the premises. There have only been three incidents that have been reported to us since the licence was granted. They are detailed on pages fifty seven going over into fifty eight at the back. In effect, it's three public order incidents, one in February, one in May, one in April and one in May this year. On each occasion, CCTV was requested by the attending officers. On the first and the final occasion, it was confirmed by the complainant that there was no CCTV of the incident, and that they weren't supporting a formal investigation, at which point advice was given. And on the middle occasion, a female was arrested because she had been alleged to have lunged at staff in the venue, and CCTV was again requested, and that case a month later had to be filed due to the fact that CCTV was not provided despite several attempts to obtain CCTV from Victoria. At the time, as far as, I was aware when these things popped up on my relevant systems, the premises didn't have a DPS. So although they have a licence condition, which is licence two point eight of the licence, requiring CCTV to be provided upon request, we thought that the licence, I believe that the premises was not selling alcohol. So the conditions are only in force if they are providing the licensable activities that covered off. But following the information provided by Eleanor in her review paperwork, it would appear that it is highly possible that licensable activities were taking place, at which point we have a potential for three further breaches of the licence there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, Gemma, for any of the other parties? No questions from the committee? Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Ella. Gemma. Three occasions CCTV was not functioning. Do you know whether the officers asked why it was not functioning when they attended? Is that on the report?
It just states that they were asked for the CCTV, and on the first and the final occasion, it was told that there was no CCTV of the incident, it's all that is worded. So I don't know if that's a CCTV didn't capture the incident because it happened outside of eye line, or if it was because the CCTV system itself wasn't working. On the second occasion, there were requests made, one, two, three, four, five times over four weeks. So it appears the officers believed that there was CCTV of the incident. But the case had to be filed due to not being provided in the timeframe that it would have been kept on system four.
Thank you.
You can celebrate, Graham? All right. So finally, we'll move on to Environmental Health. Ryan, go ahead.
So Environmental Health have had ongoing and serious concerns regarding these premises. Despite multiple visits, formal notices, so hygiene improvement notices for food, a prohibition notice in regards to health and safety, and numerous opportunities to comply, premises continues to operate in breach of food safety and health and safety legislation, posing a significant risk to public health. In summary, so the first inspection, which I conducted on the nineteenth of March 2024, there were a number of food safety issues, which included no temperature monitoring of high-risk food, no working wash-hand basin, food pass that's used by date, structural issues. In March 2024, a referral from that visit on the nineteenth of March was made to the fire authority. The fire authority did visit in March 2024, and the feedback from their report were that there were issues identified. And on the report, it did say the people at risk in case of fire. On the twenty eighth of September 2024, I carried out a revisit. There are still issues with no hot water, no gas safety certification, poor structural condition and cleaning. In November 2024, a colleague investigated nuisance complaint in regards to cooking odours due to inadequate ventilation affecting nearby residents. On the first of July 2025, I carried out a joint inspection with my manager. During that visit, there was a new mezzanine floor with no guarding that was used for a dry goods store. There was a significant risk, so a prohibition notice was served under the Health and Safety Act. Also, due to the conditions in regards to food safety, we served a number of hygiene improvement notices. That included training, hassup, floors, walls, ceiling. On the eighth of September 2025, I got an email from Plus Two Three Four from the owner stating that ninety percent of the works were completed, but whoever wanted to extend the deadline, which we did, so we gave another three weeks on the hygiene improvement notices. And then on the first of October 2025, went back with my manager to assess the hygiene improvement notices during that visit. A number of the notices were not complied with. Cleaning was really poor. There was a number of food safety issues. And I also noted a staff member on top of the mezzanine floor where there was no guarding, which we had served the prohibition notice on back in the first of July, which is a clear breach of the prohibition notice. Probably the only updates from this is that the company did attend a PES interview today. So obviously, we're investigating the food safety offences, the health and safety offences. So the company did attend an interview under caution this morning, which they also informed us that the premises has temporarily closed since the thirtieth of the tenth, twenty five. So yeah, that's all the updates from me from Environmental Health.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Any questions from the Subcommittee?
Please.
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you repeat the date that you were told the premises had been closed?
I was told it was closed on the thirtieth of the tenth, twenty five.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
All right. So now we move on to the premises licence holder. So Victoria, please present your case.
Good evening, everyone. Chair, I'm going to read out a statement. Okay. Chair, members of the committee and officers, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Uh, my name is Victoria and I'm the premise licence holder and also the director for plus two, three, four. I want to begin by acknowledging the concerns raised by environmental health and the licensing officers. I feel I'm fully understand the seriousness and I accept responsibility for the shortcomings identified by my at the premise. I want to open um with full transparency and full honesty. Um, I believe that the issues identified are extremely significant and um I actually took the decision to close the premises like I just mentioned. On the thirty of, thirty first of October. Um, so that we would stop trading and properly investigate everything that was raised by not only Ryan but Eddie as well. Um, since closing, we have focused on understanding exactly where things have gone wrong and what I must do to ensure full compliance. Um, we've been seeking professional food safety and licensing advice. We've been researching legal and operational requirements. We've also looked into retraining um for myself and actually also future staff. Um, we've actually also let go quite a few number of staff. Um, we've also reviewed processes and how to rebuild operation safely um and responsibly. Although much, much of this work is still ongoing, the reason I've not tried to quickly reopen is because I want to make sure that any future operation meets the licensing. Objectives and the standards expected by our environmental health and the licensing officers. I want to reassure the committee that I am not ignoring the issues. I have taken them very seriously and unfortunately have had a. Shortcomings my way. Um, I've 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 had some shortcomings. Um, I'm taking them very seriously and I'm prepared to undertake any training, conditions or steps the committee considers appropriate. My goal is to operate safely and compliantly or not at all, which is why the premises has remained shut while I work through the concerns properly. I appreciate the role of the environmental health and the licensing authority. Their intervention has made it clear that improvements were necessary and I welcome the opportunity to put these things right. Um, thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions um you might have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for any of the other parties? Yeah, go ahead, James.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and through you, Chair. Um, just a couple of questions. So I think firstly, obviously mistakes can happen and um the licensing process does require some administrative hoops to jump through. And and I think I haven't heard any mitigation and I haven't been involved in the investigation. But I haven't heard any mitigational excuses as to why Victoria hasn't been able to provide a personal licence. Or apply to put a new DPS on. So I think it would really help the committee in their decision. If you can give any reason why, when this matter was raised a very long time ago.
Yeah.
You you didn't undertake those, I think, quite basic steps to get into compliance.
I completely understand. Okay, so first of all, um, when I applied for the licence last year, oh no, twenty twenty four. Um, I was granted the licence. I wasn't aware that I had to have a separate licence because I'd already done the qualification. So I believe it was Eleanor that contacted me earlier this year and said I needed a separate licence that was needed to sell alcohol at the premise. When I was given the licence, that wasn't made clear to me that there was another further step that I would have to um participate in. To be able to sell alcohol. So it was Eleanor that contacted me earlier this year. I be- I believe it was February, right? Check through my notes. It was February and I did send her, you know, I've got the proof, I've got my um qualifications, we're selling alcohol. Because at that point, I wasn't aware of um any breaches in um. Yeah, in the in the in the law. So obviously from February to now, it's quite a long time and we've had communication back and forth. Since then, um. Apart from the fact that I wasn't aware at that point in time, it was. A few things that happened along the way. So initially I did apply for it to the Milton Keynes Council. And then I was told because I had moved personal residence as a a premise holder, as the um licence holder. I wasn't able to apply for it in the Milton Keynes Council. So I'd actually sent that off. Waiting for a response, thinking I was going to get the personal licence. But then eventually, I think it was also Eleanor, I'm not sure if it's Ed, that basically told me, which was only a couple of months, like a month ago or so. That I wasn't going, I shouldn't have applied to Milton Keynes Council, that I needed to apply to the Bedford Council. Um, so then that was basically, um. I I I was just waiting in lieu for the receipt of the um the the licence. And then it was to, I was made aware that like it wouldn't go through because I'd moved homes in between the period that I'd applied for the licence. So unfortunately, lo- loads of things have happened in between um the time, which has made it a bit more lengthy than I would like. Um, I don't know, I would um like to um. Say that it should have, I think I should have been a bit more thorough and a bit more um. Quicker to maybe maybe do my research and quicker to, you know, sort things out. And I was a bit slow on things and I do admit that. Um, so and I'm not, I can't put any blame on anyone, but apart from myself, because that is my responsibility. Um, so the only reason that we don't have the licence now is because I was one, waiting for this day to happen. Two, like I said, I have moved residence, so I need to actually apply to a different um council. And three, um, I have actually closed the restaurant down in last month. So it's been like a month we've been closed. And I'm kind of waiting to see what today, what transpires today to kind of see what happens. If I if I will go ahead and make an application with the Bedford Council. So I know, I know it's not a great, um, yeah.
So I just like, I know you might have multiple questions, James, do you know, crack on for a second?
Um, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Victoria. I think is that, that's the end of your answer, I think, yeah. Um, so ju- just to help again, the the committee, so as a personal licence holder, you apply. To the licensing authority where you live. And I think you probably had an M K postcode.
I moved it.
But that doesn't mean necessarily that you live in Milton Keynes. So I'd accept there probably was some confusion in that respect. Um, and so have you, or come through you, Chair, just to ask whether the licence holder has now applied for a personal licence?
No, like I just said, I'm waiting for the response from today to see if, because I could apply for it and it's going to be revoked anyway today.
Sorry, you did say that. I didn't quite pick up on that. Um, and also probably address your answers to the chair.
Oh, sorry.
They will be making the decision. Um, and then confirm you're not operating in a business. Um, and then the other one, this might be relevant, more relevant for Gemma perhaps, but was CCTV. In operation and was it available at those incidents?
Yes, CCTV has always been in operation at the business. Um, so unfortunately, um. They're incorrect. The the first, um, second and third situations that happened, we called the police. And um, she's, this is my manager, um, she can kind of confirm, but it was basically a thing of, they were, they used to be past staff members. And we didn't want to press charges. So even though we were asked for CCTV, we just said we don't want to go on with the case. Sorry. Point to you. We just said we don't want to go on with the case. We don't want to, um, you know, take it any further. It wasn't presented to us that the CCTV was mandatory. It was just if you want to carry on with the case, we're going to see, we need to see the evidence. And since we decided as like, um, for my company that we didn't want to press any charges. We just didn't see any need in like, you know, sending any proof or making any more statements. As we just wanted the people off the premise at that point in time. And once that was conducted, that was it. So if they'd um sent us like a message to say it's a mandatory thing that we need the CCTV. We would have provided that. And I believe when Ed did come for his compliance check, he did ask to see the CCTV and I did show him all the cameras and. Um, he was able to verify that.
Yep, go ahead, James.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Victoria. Um, one last question then. So we've had heard a bit of mitigation as to why Victoria didn't hold a personal licence. And this might be stealing your funder members, but the the question I'd really like some mitigation to and answer to is why. Did the licence holder continue to sell alcohol? Even when I feel, looking at the paperwork, it was made abundantly clear that you were not authorised to sell alcohol.
Okay, yes, hundred percent. Um, so it was made very clear to staff members they were not to sell alcohol. So I want to make that very clear. So once we did get the notice not to sell, that was made abundantly clear. For reasons why I cannot say, because they're not here today, some staff members just did not follow the. Um, because I'm not, I'm not on site ninety percent of the time. Um, so I do go in, the manager was aware, she made it clear. Not to sell alcohol. I think the day that Ed or whoever did the um. The compliance check, it was a, it was a new member of staff that was there and she should, she should have known. Unfortunately, our menus are expensive, so it's a drinks menu that has over like two hundred products and there is an alcohol section on the menu. So it's not an alcohol menu. We don't sell wine. We don't have wine glasses. They're actually water glasses. We don't, so we don't, we've never sold wine. Um, so it was, so the glasses on the table that you see are water glasses. Um, so it's, I made it very clear to every member of staff. We had a staff meeting. I said, you know, we're not selling alcohol, but like we're a new company as well and we've had. Uh, an irritating amount of turnover of staff and which in my, not in my defence, but. Once again, in my shortcomings, training hasn't maybe been up to standard like I would prefer it to be. So maybe that is a lack of training that we should, um, I should have had as well. Um, so like the new members of staff should have been more thorough in understanding that we were not to sell alcohol. Um, so yeah. So they were aware, but it's just.
Thank you very much. And Ed, you had a question?
Just to help, um, well, not to help, to to verify on the CCTV. Uh, so I visited end of October. We checked the cameras. I was with Victoria at the time, actually. Um, and they did have CCTV and I did verify thirty one days. So at the time when I visited um in October, they did. And also whilst I've had the chance, then um, Council McLean, when I visited. The menus do show that water was available, because I have a copy of the menu, since you asked me that earlier on. Um, so the CCTV was working at that time, but I don't know, pri- prior to that, obviously, I can't, I can't co- can't comment.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to questions from the subcommittee. I'm sure you'll be delighted to ask some questions. Council McLean.
Okay, I think James has hit that, hit it on the head, but um. Asking us to follow up questions. I can't get it through my mind why you didn't react at the time of the licence was granted, that you didn't understand. So my question, did you take any professional advice before you opened this restaurant?
Um, yes and no. Maybe not to the full extent that I should have. Which is one of the reasons why I decided I had to close it, because I think I should have spent. More consultation in opening a restaurant rather than from a passion with perspective.
Okay, um. One thing's not been brought out, it is that a personal licence is a personal licence. It can be taken anywhere. Doesn't, it's not for your restaurant. You can use that. And it, so that's what, again, I I'm failing to understand. But picking up on a couple of points that have been made and. You might have thought the question I asked earlier about the, whether Ed asked for a jug of water. It is on there. Do you know that's on your, your drinks menu, jug of water?
Yes.
How much is it?
Um, that's scrapped. So like when people do ask for it, we do let them know it's free because with the licensing, if you're selling alcohol, you have to give free water. So unfortunately, we just haven't changed the menu. So when people do ask for it, whether it's they're drinking alcohol or not, we do provide the water. I figured that's why you asked him the question.
Absolutely, so.
Yeah.
Again, why would you put it on there? You didn't understand the licence that you'd taken. It's, it's, it's total mismanagement as well, I can see. Uh, the fact you've closed it, I think it's probably a good thing at the moment. Um, you're saying you don't do wine sales?
No, we don't sell wine.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, we don't.
It's on your menu. You do, I was just loading it up again. Two for seven types of um champagne, not all champagne, but they are wines. So that, that's what.
Oh yeah, we sell, we've got like champagne, but we don't sell wine, red wine, white wine. We don't sell wines.
But in my category, that would be wine.
Okay.
And there's certainly not two hundred different types in there. I could have just added up to about seventy. So don't exaggerate to us because. That's, it's, it's clouding the issues. Um. I think that's all for me at the moment, Chair.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, I guess to me, Victoria, I think you've kind of made a case saying, yeah, you accept full responsibility. You would have done things differently. I think my only question was. Uh, just why you didn't have a chance to respond to Eleanor, because I've been, Eleanor displayed amazing patience, more patience than I would show. We're continually chasing you and you just didn't really respond. So that was my question.
Yeah, I I I agree. Um, I agree that she did send me a few um emails. And I did respond to some of them, but like I said, I felt like um I was making the applications and I was just waiting on the response from the council. So it was, I didn't have an update for her until I got the update. So it, I just didn't have an update. And I, I know, um, also Ed has complained that I'm very slow with responding to emails. So. I do know that is, but it wasn't intentional of just like, you know, ignoring the um requirements. Initially, it was because I thought I had the right documents, which I sent to her. And then eventually when I was um proved wrong. Um, it was just, I was just waiting on the Milton Keynes Council and, um, yeah.
And that's fine. Yeah, I just went from a purposes of a, of a subcommittee, when we see the papers in front of us and we see betrayal, it just looks very one-sided.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so if there's no more questions, uh, we'll move on to closer submissions. This is an opportunity for all parties to briefly sum up their case in the same order as we talked about earlier. And there is no further opportunity of questions. Uh, so go ahead, James.
Thank you, Chair. Um. So in summary, and very briefly, um, a review is usually considered as sort of a last resort effort. To um either bring a premises into compliance and help them promote the licensing objectives. Or or to sort of as an enforcement tool in effect. And it's only when all other avenues have failed, or the correspondence that you would have seen from uh my colleagues to try and resolve the issue. Once that's failed, what more can we do? And the option would be to take a prosecution or to serve closure notices, um, as has been done, or or to um apply for a review. And as members, as you're aware, it's quite rare that we bring um premises to a review. Um, you can see that a lot of effort has been taken to try and bring the premises into compliance. Um, we've heard from Victoria that there are some elements of mitigation. Um, I think there was probably quite a bit of misunderstanding in place. There's been a premises, a a move. Um, which might have affected the obtaining of a personal licence. Um. And it is difficult to start a new business. Um, and it will be for members to decide what sort of weight to give to that mitigation as to whether it's an acceptable um excuse. Or an acceptable reason as to why there has been this non-compliance. Um. I, I will find you the section in a minute in respect to the guidance, but I referenced it in my report and it is in the back of the um. At the last few pages of the report, um, that where warnings have already been provided by officers. Um, it might seem inappropriate for members to consider giving a a further warning to try and. Get someone into compliance. And so I think members need to think very carefully about what decision you're going to make. Um, and again, in my report, it says what you can do and what that is, is to potentially remove licensable activities. To modify activities, add conditions, modify conditions, suspend or revoke the licence. Give a warning or indeed take no action. And but those details are in my report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Eleanor?
Thank you, Chair. So in summary, this matter represents a serious and sustained failure to comply with the licensing act two thousand and three. The lack of engagement, repeated breaches and disregard for enforcement measures demonstrate that this premises is unwilling or unable to operate responsibly. The statutory guidance and case law are clear. Where problems persist despite warnings, revocation is appropriate and proportionate response. Whilst Victoria states she was unaware of the requirements of applying for a personal licence, she had provided evidence of attending the level two personal licence. Course in previous correspondence to which is verbally confirmed in her presentation to you today. This would suggest that she is aware of the responsibilities under the act and the need for the application for the formal licence. At no stage have Milton Keynes City Council had any record of an application being received and rejected. Um, or sent to us in error, and I would question whether this was submitted. The decision to bring this matter before the licensing subcommittee has not been taken lightly. It reflects the careful consideration of the seriousness of the issues identified and the need to uphold the licensing objectives. While enforcement action, including revocation, is available and supported by case law, our approach has been proportionate and measured. We have sought to engage with the licence holder and provide opportunities for compliance before resorting to a formal review. Demonstrating our commitment to working collaboratively, wherever possible. Therefore, I respectfully submit the revocation of the premises licence is necessary to uphold the licensing objectives and protect the public. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Uh, Gemma?
Thank you, Chair. Um, in summary, we have three cases of CCTV being requested and not being provided. I do accept that the licensee has stated that officers didn't make it clear that it was mandatory. But it is not for the officers investigating a public order offence to know the ins and outs of the individual licence for the premises. That is for the licensee to be aware of their requirements for running that premises um in line with the legislation. Um, so it does appear that we have got um undermining of the licensing objectives in particular. Around prevention of crime disorder by non-supporting of offences occurred at the premises. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ryan.
From our, from our representation, um, it just shows a lack of confidence and management. Um, to be able to promote the objectives. Um, obviously, um, we would be taking our own enforcement. In terms of food safety, health and safety. Um, but, but I do feel that, um. You know, we do not have the confidence in in the management to effectively promote the licensing objectives.
And finally, yourself, Victoria.
Yeah, like I said, I've listened to everyone today. I do somewhat agree that, um, you know, um, trust in management was pretty low. Um, but like I said, we're closed currently and we are, we won't be reopening till we can. Fully be confident that we're taking everything that we can do to be compliant, not only with the. fully be confident that we're taking everything that we can do to be compliant, not only with the alcohol licensing, but the full, um, food, um, health safety organisations as well. So I do want the committee to bear that in mind that, um, you know, we will, we'll prepare to take any action that's required to get us fully compliant.
Thank you very much. All right. So we move on to deliberations. So, uh, myself, my two colleagues, our legal advisor and clerk will now adjourn to deliberate and will return with a verdict. Uh, we have decided to go for option E, which is revoke the licence with immediate effect. Um, but I just wanted to also add, we want to thank you for coming today for, uh, you know, presenting your case. Um, as a committee, we decided, you know, if you, if we revoke it, you can start it again fresh. We highly urge you to work closely with the licensed officers. We can, and then we can come back and revisit any future applications. Um, so yeah, I think I'll leave with that and it is, uh, seven PM and I'll end the meeting.